Alright, everybody, welcome to our October tenth regular scheduled Board of Finance meeting, if you please join me for the pledge. The pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, in two republics, which stands one nation, under God.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, again, first thing on agenda, public input, I know Eric is here for presentation. Uh, so there's no other public correspondence, Mary, anything?
No.
Nothing correspondence? Alright, um, next thing is the regular minutes from our September twelfth meeting, does everybody have a copy of those minutes with them? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a vote, will they be sent the minutes as written?
We have a second? John second, any other discussion on September twelve, I think everybody was present, right?
There's good.
All in favor?
I.
The record show you now this. Uh, next thing on the, um, is the mini splits and I believe Eric is here, um, about the mini splits about the IT room?
Yep, Nick is not here, but. Down the well, but we'll see.
Yep.
So, um, Nick came to me and this is for the main server room. Uh, which is right over around the corner there, I believe there's three server rooms all together in this building, so that's the main one. They haven't been split in there, but it's unreliable, it's continuing to break down and kind of Jerry rigged a window air conditioner for now, but. And he was very concerned that if he gets something as soon as possible, because this is critical, you know, data. So what we, um. Uh, what we did is we looked at getting another mini split, um, and with with two changes, one, we're gonna get. Two of them this time, so there's one redundant minute, and this apparently is the standard procedure for server one these days, so, um. We'll have two, if one goes down, we'll have the exact same one as that. Now, we're not gonna run it like that, they'll probably run it three months on one, a few months there, just to kind of even out the wear and tear, but if one does go down, then it's all with replacement. Um, the other thing we had them do, um, which is also part of the, part of the building permit that they need to get, they have some kind of annual J calculation, which. Whoever the winning bidder is, is gonna have to provide, basically what they did was. They calculated how much BTU the servers were putting off. And the other thing we wanted them to do was size it so that we don't have to come back. Right now, there's three server racks, uh, in the room, they took a look at those, figured out how much heat those are putting off. And may allow us for two more, because Nick said, we're getting at least one more rack, and there's room in that room for us this one. So they sized it for as if that room was full capacity, although it's only three racks now, but it was up to five. So that's what we did, um. Those are the, that's the main parameters, we met with that, all three companies showed them the room, showed them everything. Um, they came up with quotes, um, and so that is the first table that you see there, we have, um. Edging ESC and B and D control there, all three of them we work with, they work with the town, I think. All of them right now, uh, Edgerton and ESC definitely have on-call contracts and B and D. Reduce frequently, so they're all very familiar to us, uh, B and D is local. If you look at that table with the base price and the wifi enabling, um, together, and I'll hit to the roof down in a second, all the bits are very comparable. The wifi was an important component because. All of our buildings already, all of our HVAC have controls which our building manager supervisor can see from his laptop, he's got like a master computer where he can see. He can see all the controls, all the fans, everything, something's off, who's notified other, where it's come up. But also Nick, an IT, would would get any kind of alerts if anything happened to this one unit, so he would know, you know, he's already got. Thermometers, temperature gauges, like that. And they, by the way, they run this all, all year, even in the winter, because you know, the amount of heat that these servers generate. So that's another reason, it's not, it's not just sun. So, uh, currently. The one unit, um, you can see this, and ESC has a few pictures in there, but you can see this is what the interior, uh, means what it looks like. And this is the exterior, which wasn't dark, it's right on the wall up, it's up the window, but we have this mounted up here. One of the bidders suggested that, um, because we're gonna have two of them now. And this is hard to service, this is like twenty-five feet up in the air, it's very difficult for a technician to work on that, obviously while it's on the ladder. We had plenty of room on the flat roof above, uh, they suggested we mount those exterior units on that roof. I went up there with great just to see for myself, that there's plenty of room, looks fine. I didn't want to make.
And that's what, that's all, I'm sorry, that's just, that's one level right there, right? I mean, after we leave this building, that's a flat room up there?
Yes, well, this building is kind of a celebration of many different buildings, but yeah, that, that. That wing, like when you take a left out of here, that wing is basically a flat roof until you come to about the top of the ramp, more or less.
Right, but again, so you're talking about putting those mini splits not on the wall, but up on that flat roof for serviceability?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so it would be.
And for looks, I, I think.
Well, that, that's true too, and this is right over a sidewalk, it's right.
Yeah, it's right here in the corner here.
If you've probably seen.
Yep.
Yeah, so that was the roof now, so. I know there's a lot of backup here, there's the all three quotes, plus after we got the idea for the roof mount, we thought, oh, that's much better idea, we really wanna go with that. For long-term maintenance, so we went back to all three and, um. Asked them the price now, one of them, Edgerton, wasn't, didn't, wasn't interested in doing the roof. Uh, ESC gave us a new price, and B and D, it was actually B and D who came up with the idea here. For the roof now, um, if you exclude Edgerton from that. Then on this first table, really that kind of middle there, or that thirty thousand, that, that, those are really the two numbers we compared, and B and D served right in there, two dollars less. So they were all very specific bids, which was good. Extra, so there were, there were some additional electrical work that needed to be done.
Yep.
You'll see in the questions and answers if you read through that. That, uh. Um, ESC said if they would do their own, if they had their own electrician do it, it would be about sixty-eight hundred, the other two said, you'll have to get your own electrician. And then the, the one other thing. With the roof mount is there, you need just a roofer to patch up that hole and do what they call a pitchbox.
Pitchbox, right, for the new line sets, right?
Right, right. So. This first table on the first page, the one here, is, is how we selected, um, B and D. As the main contractor, and then. On the second page, you can see another breakdown of, of the quest, so we had a base cost for B and D, the electric work, um. We asked Roger Electric to provide, provide a bid, we also worked closely with them, just forty, forty-seven hundred, change in roofing work. Uh, it's only twelve hundred, that was redone by offshore, who is the, uh, the moving contractor for this building and a bunch of our other buildings. And then, um, just, that comes up to about thirty-six thousand and change. I just wanted to put the request up to forty thousand, which is about nine or ten percent, just in case you carry anything unusual, but I don't expect you'll have to. Spend that, um, but we are going through the roof, so we just wanted to, just in case we find something in there.
So you're looking for approval for forty thousand, but anything on the spend for this project, we won't spend it, obviously.
Correct, yeah, I'm hoping we don't. I just don't wanna come back and ask for a little.
I got you. I got you. Does everybody understand what, what we're doing here?
I, I, I see what's going, uh, for, I understand what's going on, but I had a question, uh, you said that B and B was selected, what was the criteria that you used to let B and B?
Just they were the low bidder.
By three dollars?
Yeah. I mean. We, we feel that all are very competent, we use all three of them, um, B and D is also a local Bethel-based firm. And you're, you know, strictly speaking, they weren't a low bidder, um, but we're also. You know, happy to do them as well as a firm, and they were the one who came up with the idea for the roof, so we thought that that was another factor that, you know. You know, I thought, I, you know, they, they kind of went above and beyond and thought of that idea in the first place, rather than just replacing what was there, so.
There any useful light left in the one that's there? I know it's not big enough for what we've been using it for.
We are, Greg, we're gonna store it, we're gonna keep it, store it, and we can use it for something, we will, uh, we don't have anything specific in mind, but. Uh, we're not, we're not just possibly.
So that unit didn't fail? I thought something was, was locked out.
It's, it's not reliable, it's.
Okay, and then when you went to the window unit?
Yeah, the, the window, oh yeah, the window unit is just spare whether you need to happen, um, the old mini split, we're just gonna keep around in case you wanna use it, something that's not critical. Like IT, and you just, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly what we're gonna do with it, but we'll have fun.
Just a little backup, when that unit was put in, we put in it last, like, probably like ten years ago, there was one server rack in there. Nick's office actually used to sit in there, now I couldn't imagine him. But it was, we used to have, when I started here twelve years ago, it was just a window unit, and then as technology has advanced.
Equipment added.
Um, and it just, I don't think anybody anticipated it's like ten years ago when I was put in, that we were gonna end up with three racks in there. You know? Well, maybe we did someday, we didn't think it'd be within like ten years.
Okay.
Um. The, the other question I had asked of, uh, Nick was, um, that we do have the two other IT rooms. One of the things they've done is pulled some of the equipment out of those and put them more centralized. Um, so that's one of the reasons that more of the equipment's gone in there, but it also means that we don't have to cool the other rooms.
Kitchen, Cynthia, did you have a question?
So sometimes the sound is cutting out, but I just wanna confirm, are, are you saying that of all these, the three proposals, you're leaning towards B and D, is that what you're saying?
Yes, B and D.
Okay, cuz I, then I, I definitely have a couple of questions, because I did look through all of these, and there's a lot of not included here that. I just thought maybe you could talk about, because this starts out with overtime pay, and there's a lot of different things in here that. The other ones weren't very specific about what was not included, so if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we asked about.
What that means.
That's right up there, and basically, um, his response, that's a boilerplate statement, he confirmed in the questions that we followed up with. That, um, it would do any of the necessary, um, wiring or anything that we needed, a lot of that stuff that's in that disclaimer there, or stuff that. We wouldn't need anyway, shop drawings, bin drawings, that sort of stuff, smoke detectors, all of, all that stuff.
Right, well, well, overtime pay is something that, you know, you can't, I mean, that involves. Why? I mean, if it has to be done, it has to be done, so I mean, it's just, it's a little bit of a red flag for me, I'm sure they're fine, but. It's just a weird thing to put in not included.
Well, one thing I wanted to add, I, I don't know, did you say at the beginning that the third bid, we actually excluded from this paperwork, because they weren't gonna work on the roof? That was also a large company with a similar boilerplate. Contract is what, uh, ESC has given us.
Yeah.
So I, I understand your concerns, Cynthia, I just kind of, I'm saying the same thing that, um, Eric has said, that. This is very much a standard contract from a larger company versus the Bethel-owned company. I think that's why that looks that way, the other one looked the same way, the Edgerton.
You know, it's, it's very common, right, you said, to put that boilerplate, if they're just trying to deflect, 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 and protect.
Oh, I know, I've seen boilerplate, you know, I mean, my mortgage was on boilerplate, but thank God nothing happened, but you never know.
I mean, yeah.
There's, everything's a boilerplate, but until it boils over, I mean. Onto your plate.
I guess my response would be, we, we know the owner, we work with them, and we trust them, they've done work in this building before, and, um. We're not, we're not worried about them, you know, this isn't some firm that we're not familiar with that likes to, you know, use that language to. You know, sneak around us or something.
Get one over.
That's alright, yeah, that's our sense.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I'm in favor, and I think we need to protect the things that we own, my only question is, this is obviously gonna be a motion taken out of our C and R account, it seems like. All of these surprises always come, how long was this problem on the radar, as far as, I, I don't remember. Talking about it being on your projected. Season or, or.
Do you have to take that?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
The system that I was talking about, that we put in, had been working, so it kept freezing over, is what was the initial problem that. And then when they looked at it, they saw that the, it wasn't big enough to handle the load that it's currently having, so it's. One of those, it should have probably been a foreseeable problem. But it was running smoothly, and there's a lot of other stuff that hasn't been running smoothly, so it kind of jumped the list.
Okay.
Because it stopped working, right?
So it, up to this, up to a recent time, everything was fine, and, and, and you didn't know this was coming?
It was probably a month or two ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Great answer, thank you. Anyone else? Have you any questions? I think we're good, Cynthia, are you good? Are you, your hand's still up, Cynthia, but you're muted, are you good?
No, she's off. I guess that was, no, no, I would accept a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of up to forty thousand dollars to repair the mini splits in the IT server room. And for it to come out of our C and R account.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, can I just ask that it's not a repair, it's a.
It's a repair. Sorry. Alright, um, any other discussion? Do you have a second? All in favor?
I.
Let the record do unanimous, okay, thank you, Eric, alright, let's get it fixed, and we're in favor of fixing what we own, let's not worry about the next big thing. You know, okay, thank you. Alright, um, again, the next thing is, um, uh, our first selectman asked us to put this radar, uh, mobile radar detector, um, are you?
Well, license, license.
A license plate reader, two beers.
So, as you, as you well know, maybe, maybe you don't know, but certainly in Bethel, even last week, we had a rash of break-ins in town where. They go through the rummage, tack, rummage of cars, take off, um, we've got a number of people show up at Target, go in, steal stuff. In fact, once, uh, the Danbury PD actually caught the folks between that, Danbury and Bethel, a joint operation, they caught three folks up at Danbury, or the Target here in Bethel, rather. And, um, one was on parole for murder. And one had a gun. And they're in there, you know, ripping stuff out, but the problem is, oftentimes when they do this, they come in town in a stolen car. And as you know, the police pursuit policies have changed dramatically, you can only pursue a car if they did a violent crime, or you think they're gonna do one. Or in some other way harm somebody, so if it's property crime, if you, if you catch them, they all know it now, they speed off. Um, in fact, one of the stolen cars, I think, out in this area, or no, it was the one in Greenwich, rather, that they found it in Berlin in a chop shop. I mean, it's a very organized group of people, I think mainly Hartford, New Haven, and some Waterbury, who come into small towns like ours and take stuff. I was actually down at a, a event where I was looking for the possibly having kind of an outdoor camera, solar camera, something to catch the folks dumping tires. And I ran across this technology, um, it's a license plate reader camera, uh, we have some on some of our vehicles. But the unique thing about this is, we, it's, it's somewhat mobile, we can literally put it on a pole. Um, out by one of the entrances to town, and we can move it to another pole, you know, multiple places, move it around if we need to. And ostensibly what would happen is in the middle of the day, let's say we have this on three oh two, and all of a sudden we get a hit from a stolen car. That F one goes over to the dispatch in the PD, they know now the stolen car just came in town. Most of the time, the stolen car is not here to do any good, but if it's in the daytime, they could probably go up to Target or go to some of those places and be able to find it. Without occupant in it and stop a crime, if that vehicle came in at night, ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night, midnight. Now you know they're up to something entirely different, and you know, if those folks up on, uh, Kellogg and Linda Lane, we'd have this maybe a week or so ago, you never know. So the idea is that we're getting advanced warning, and we can catch people before or during the time they do something. When I came to the Board of Selectment with this, we'd actually looked at possibly doing two and buying them. After we spoke about it in our board, we decided that it would make sense to lease one for a year and see if we get anything from it. So that's where we are today, I mean, we can, um, it's not a lot of money, there's not a lot we can do that's preventative. But it's definitely an issue that's facing Bethel, I mean, over the last few months, it's happened a number of times, and, uh, if you ask any of the police here, talk to the chief. It's stolen cars coming into town, so I figure this is a pretty inexpensive way to do something proactive that helps the residents, and it's, and not a lot of money. So, that's a scoop, obviously answering questions of, yes.
It's a cost to buy it.
Eleven thousand dollars.
So now, if at the end of the year we decide we wanna move forward, is it like a lease to buy, or are we like kind of screwed and not available?
Um, I, I don't know what the lease to buy out part is going to be, there's, there's obviously gonna be an option to buy it, I don't know how much it's gonna be.
Okay.
But this is, you know, in all, in all, we looked at this, and this is probably the, we were originally looking at two.
Right.
You know, do one maybe up on three oh two, and then do one, excuse me, on, um, Route six, and then do one maybe on three oh two, where, you know, folks maybe come up for a bit, but. That's, that was the original idea, but then, you know, we talked about it, and we'll try five brands, see if we can get anything out of it, and we'll know if it, it works pretty quick.
I was gonna say, would you, I mean, I guess you could move forward faster than a year if it, it's pretty quick.
We could, obviously.
Yeah, pretty good results, they, they say, hey, we got three of them, and it's a no-brainer.
We, 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 we know we're getting a lot of traffic from Waterbury, but it was interesting, I was listening to the radio on the exhaust when I talked to the chief this morning. And, um, the next morning, when the calls were coming in about the night I was up at like six o'clock, one of the guys had said, well, the backpack that he got stolen from his car was in New Haven. So the chief seems to think that, you know, these are kind of organized groups, and they're doing this kind of all together, so. I think we'll find out very quickly if we're gonna catch anybody from it.
Is one catch successful, and that means that you wanna go forward and buy the equipment?
I don't know that, actually, I think we, we really have to look at it all together and see if it's worth it, I mean, listen, if you catch one for, you spend five grand, that's pretty good. I think I might wanna know, you know, what's happening, or how often we see stolen cars coming in, yeah, we may not, we may not catch all of them, but if we see a lot of them coming through, getting hits. That means over, it's like the law of large numbers, the sales, you know, eventually you're gonna get more of them if you have. More, more opportunity out there, but I think it's something, it's one of the few things we can actually do for our residents that's proactive. You know?
So, but what I mean is, so, so what, in our thought process on if it's worth spending the money?
Yeah.
Is, is, you know, looking a year forward, is one arrest. What, what you would consider successful, and the selection would then recommend to us?
No. I, I, it probably depends on the rest, to be honest, if we, if we catch somebody and, um, it's just, you know, some kids out for a joyride, eh, I don't know. But if we catch somebody and, you know, they find a gun in the car, or, you know, the, the car's stolen, they, they find a gun, or they find, you know, the kids are doing something else, or the adults. Yeah, we might, we might as a group get together and look at that, I'm open-minded, you know, I'll, I'll come to the. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and say, hey, what do you guys think? You know, because this is, is uncharted territory.
And I don't think it's only about an arrest, if they've, if there was F one, I believe it's.
The F one.
If there's six F ones, at least, we're knowing they're coming in, if, if we catch up with them, or they drove out of town quick, we can't help all that.
It'd, it'd be nice.
That, that tool is actually working.
It'd be nice to get, you know, even if we got a couple stolen cars out of it. You know, I think that's worth something.
Sure.
You know?
You get them parked.
It's, it's hard to save in a year, it's just one, I, I don't know, you know, if we get a lot of F ones and we can't catch them, maybe then, maybe we're still parked up the wrong tree, right? But if we get a couple F one hits, and we're able to get a hold of a couple of them, I would say, yeah, we should have a cake for it.
No, I'm not, I'm not a cop anymore, I mean, I'm not a cop, in F one, you're saying, registered, or stolen.
Stolen.
And, and they're allowed to pull that over and chase them down and get the car stopped?
They're, they're allowed to pull them over, but they can't chase them, that's the problem.
Okay, but then, so if they run.
If they run, we're out of luck.
If they try to do a traffic stop and he stops, then they got him, but you can't chase.
But the idea then is, if luckily, or we, we would have a chance to be lucky, we would catch them when the parked at Target going in to do their stuff. Or if they're, all of a sudden we find them along, you know, Kellogg, or Linda Lane, or somewhere where it's dark, and they're not in the car.
You can block the car.
Then he got her. Then he got her, that's what happened in Danbury, Target, Danbury PD was there on some sort of stakeout, and these were repeat offenders, they called Bethel, they all responded. And they chased a few, they got all three, one went back in, they got them, they chased the other two down. And they, they didn't clear outside the car.
But the car was blocked.
Our response.
I'm, I'm willing to try it, I, I would support it, so if someone likes to make a motion.
No, I'll make a motion, I think it's an outstanding idea, it's an honest price and. First selectman's point, make a year worth of data and see where you wanna go.
Okay.
Yeah, outstanding, yeah, so I'll make a motion that, uh, and I take it it's capital amount of current.
Yes, Senator.
Yeah, that we improve the use of, and is the, I'm sorry, one more question, is the forty-eight eighty-nine, you know?
Um.
Forty-eight eighty-nine, right?
Yeah, that's the number we've got on the quote, let's see. Yeah. I mean, yeah, and that's the least, I'm, I'm sure anything else, you know, as far as like the pole and all those minimal things, or the minimums, we can.
Take those out of our. Oh, and the only thing I didn't see is if there's like a, like a license for the year, there's like a.
There you go.
Comes with it. Zero dollar annual camera license, but there's gotta be a software piece of it.
Yeah. It's on your en- annual camera license, it's in her, but zero, they included that in price, probably getting it started. Okay. Right?
There's probably, we, we probably have to pay for the. There's gotta be like a SIM card in it for data and stuff like that, but that's a minimal cost that we can take out of our utility.
But this is live, it, we're not taking a SIM card out and figuring out, it's going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it has, it has a cellular router in it.
That's what I mean, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I will make a motion that we approve for payment out of the capital amount of recurring account in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the purpose of leasing a mobile license plate reader.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay, discussion, Cynthia, did you have anything just on that, you're all good, alright, can you try, everybody, all in favor?
I.
I. The record show you now, it's, okay, thank you, Dan, we'll give it to you.
I appreciate that, everyone.
You're right. I do, much. Alright, controllers report.
Alright, so, uh, A one in your packet is the, it says updated ten-four twenty-two-three, there is no change in prior month, which is good. Um, the auditors are driving me crazy with questions that I like.
Good.
Um, but there's been no change to it since last month, which is good, knock on wood, we haven't gotten anything that came out. Uh, we're still waiting to hear from our insurance company about the claim on the bridge that was hit, um. So, like, nothing's booked for that now, so that's a twenty, that's another twenty grand in expenses that if I do book a receivable for it.
Comes on a good side.
Would be on the good side, um, so right now, we're still sitting at forty-three-six to the good with the full C and R transfer of six fifty. Any questions on June? Uh, September thirtieth, we, um. The top, the collections is trailing a little bit prior year. Um, it's still in the range of, if I look at the last five years, it's usually between thirty-seven and like last year to the high year of thirty-nine five-five. Um, so it's right in the range that we'd wanna see, sometimes it's just timing of when the first of October is and stuff like that. Um, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I'm just curious, but are we hearing any involvement, or is the tax collector hearing any involvement, information about. You know, economy and stuff, have a harder time making my payments, something that we might wanna start thinking about, or some difference.
Yeah, not that she said anything, she said the number's lower than she wants, but some of it could be back taxes, like, last year she collected more than a hundred percent.
Right.
Like more than a hundred percent in penalties and interest, so the interest and stuff could be trailing prior years, um, we haven't heard anything, or I haven't heard anything. That, um, I know the revale jumped up a lot of people's taxes, I haven't heard her complaining that the taxes are harder to collect, or. You know, I know there was some people complaining, which, they're right, but I believe that everybody's paying in the same manner that they normally do. Not manners, I'm.
Just two percent down. Just sounds like us.
Uh, that's usually everything about her thing, and.
And it gets, this puts us.
Yes.
Into the first quarter, right?
Yeah, so.
Or it takes something, ends the first quarter, brings us into the second quarter.
Correct. Um.
See, you're trending.
Yeah, so right now, we're thirty-seven seven, last year was thirty-nine five, the year before was thirty-eight nine, thirty-eight two, thirty-seven, thirty-five. Um, so it's, and it seems like the trend tra- traditionally is the jump one percent from August to September, it's not a collection month. Um, we were actually higher than prior, last year after July, we were at twenty-nine five, this year we're thirty-three six. So some of it, my guess is, if I dug really deep into the numbers, it's probably the back taxes, it depends on when some of those back taxes come in. Um, cause that jumps it up, um, so we'll see at the end of October. Like to see how close we are to the fifty seven oh eight that we were last year, um so. It's something that, out of my eye, and that's why I mentioned it, and I asked her about it, but she's not stressing about it, she just. Likes her numbers being higher, which I'm sure. Um, the other thing on the revenue piece, we talked about a couple times, the miscellaneous state revenues, is that one thirty? It's the money we got for cars, um. I do believe we're gonna have another, we budgeted like two eighty two, we budgeted two eighty two, six sixty for miscellaneous state revenue. Uh, we're gonna get that two eighty two, which will bring us up to eight hundred thousand. And I think we're gonna get probably another two hundred or so, another money that we weren't counting on, it's a municipal revenue sharing account. Which for the, like, the last ten years, they always said, we're, yeah, oh yeah, Bethel's gonna get, last year was the first year we ever got it. Um, that's why if you look back at the June one, we just kind of talked about, we were over a million dollars in that account. Um, but again, we don't bank on stuff that we've been burnt, not burnt down, committed a budget for it, but. Misled in the past about getting it, um so we'll see how that trend continues. Um. Everything else, you'd like charges for services at twenty five percent, right where you want it to be, use of money. So we've already collected a third of the amount for interest that we anticipated, a fourth of the way through the year. Um, anybody that's gone for a mortgage or has opened a new bank account lately can see why, um rates are really high right now. Uh, and the big one for the intergovernmental revenues, the eight million, most of it's equal cost sharing. I think at the end of October, November, we get first fourth of it. And then like three months later, we get another fourth, and then the end of the year, they send us staff, um. They break it into fourths, but make you wait, you're like a quarter trailing and then they dump like the last half on you at the end of the year. Um. Expenses, with, uh, so I'll talk about that before going to expenses. Dan and I have started our, well, and setting, I've started our quarterly budget reviews with department heads. We've done five or six so far, um they've been really helpful, um there's not a lot. Budget wise, actual this year to talk about yet, but that's kind of good time to start on these meetings. So we're talking about what they've seen, what they've trended, what they've seen and they're trending, and kind of talking about. Like, three months from now, they need to have a budget to make, so it's, you know, starting those conversations. Um, tomorrow morning, we meet with Eric, and I assume he's gonna bring Bob Dibble with him. Um, so that'll be a longer one, but they're going well, um I think it's, I found it really helpful, Dan's finding it helpful, and I think it's good just to give them. Time to come talk about their budget in the middle of the year, um because otherwise, a lot of them don't look at it the rest of the year. They look quickly every month at the report and go, yeah, this is trending right, um so, but.
Okay, just a question on that, right, what, what's been the reaction of the department heads, is it, has it been kind of consistent with what we? Heard last month from Rachel where she was all that, she understood the budget was kind of her thing, her responsibility. Is that kind of the general approach to budgets from?
Um, for the most part, um we'll see how tomorrow's goes, cause. What's hard with public works, a lot of theirs is maintenance related or snow related, so I think they have a different take on. They try to get done what they, they view with that, with their expenses as needs. Cause it's based on if too many trucks break or too much stuff in the buildings break, uh so I think. It'll be interesting talking to them tomorrow and go like, we understand that some things trend higher. We don't want to know in May that they're trending higher, and you know, that's on us also, but that's why we put in these quarterly meetings. Um, for the most part, most of the department heads have always viewed it as a hard cap. Um, but a lot of the departments like, like we met with uh the building inspector last week. His account is like all salaries. And a leased vehicle which has been set in stone for all year, you know, like, so like, is meeting with him about his budget? Super imperative, because he doesn't have a lot of moving pieces to get, no, but it's helpful to kind of see what's working for him, what's not working for him. You know, like, what are his needs going forward, like one of the discussions was. So the board of finance gave you a third full-time inspector, how's that working out, what's the pros of it, have there been any negatives? Um, the answer to that was no so far, but you know, we're tracking that too, because we don't. It's all about, we have a finite amount of resources, and the departments don't like to hear this, but like, they're shared resources, you know, like. Everybody thinks their needs are the most important, but I think what's helpful, meeting with them more frequently is go like. It gives us an opportunity to talk about, like, we understand that's a problem for you. Here's the problems that are ahead of you, really, you know, like we talked about with the capital with the mini splits, this was not a priority for us doing. Until it was, when you have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment in there, you're not gonna let forty grand. Have you ruin all that equipment and probably shut down the town for a while till we're back up, right? Uh, so it's been great, I think from that standpoint, um we'll see how they continue, you know. Like I said, like, there's not a lot to talk about in the first three months, which is kind of a good opportunity, but for the most part, they've been running like an hour. Um, so, um but it's just good conversation, and I found it helpful, and I know Dan's. Been loving it because.
It's a lot of.
It's a new, lot of information coming in.
And the P O system has been working okay?
Nobody's complaining, they're submitting what they need to, um so, it's a change, and we'll see how, that'll show up. More how that's really working towards the end of the year, when we're. You know, like, when things get tighter towards the end, you know, but we are doing it, we put it in, so. So far, so good, um. I've been, Rachel's been working on her stuff. Um, I supplied her with all the September data, I dumped it from the accounting system so she can dig into it more. And I know she's looking at future stuff, I've been trying to give her a little bit of space to. Own it without micromanaging what she's doing, but I'll circle back with her to make sure she's still on pace. I know her board's all over her on it too, so.
Your meeting is November, the November meeting is on the.
Yeah, that's the hope, um.
She will make it.
Yeah, so that's the plan, and then we'll see, if she needs more time, we'll have that discussion of, if you need another week, I'm sure this board. You know, we can do specials if we need to, but the goal is that November meeting, you know, so. Um. So parking wreck is the only thing that looks alarming so far on this, and even if. They weren't in a, the situation that they are in, parking wreck's always gonna look goofy because they're so summer based. Obviously, we were realizing that, we realize now that they did not budget up money. For what they've offered last year, so that's what they're going into now. Um, but you would see that they would spend more than twenty five percent of their budget, twenty five percent of the year, every year. Um, the other things that you look at is if you get into like employee benefits. Um, health insurance companies, you pay October's bill in September. Um, same thing with workers' comp and lab insurance, we've made two in payments on that. Um, so if you look at. Town insurance, we paid six hundred and eighty thousand of the one point three million dollar budget. So that's, we made two of the four installments, and we don't charge water and sewer for their portion of. Liability auto and property and workers' comp till the end of the year. So, but all those, that's trending that it's gonna come in actually slightly under, because we got a better workers' comp rate. After the budget was set, you're not talking big bucks, it's probably gonna come in like ten grand under. Um, but we'll take. So, but yeah, everything else is looking right where I expected to be, debt service is just gonna. Debt service, we're gonna spend five million four hundred and twenty seven thousand and forty four dollars. You know, unless you guys get crazy and start bonding stuff. I didn't think that was gonna, that does give me the response, so.
Unless Cynthia wants to, Cynthia, do you want to bond anything?
No, no.
Did somebody say bond? Yeah. Yeah, believe me, it's tomorrow here, so, already, so, yeah, go ahead.
Um, the only other thing I added part of my controller report is not on the financials, so. Um, I talked to Nick the other day, and I don't know if he's talked to any of the members in board, but just to update you. Um, our plan for this cupping budget season is we will not have Open Gov this year. Um, so we had Open Gov for the last four or five years, it cost us twenty thousand dollars a year to have it. Um, it wasn't very well used or very well liked by department heads, so, um. When I took over as controller, I created the, the budget book that was smaller that I had hand out. So the plan for this coming year is we're gonna have that book, and behind each department. It's gonna be one, the two or three, four pages of detail that you would have gotten in Open Gov, um. The cons of not having a software, it's not gonna be instantly updated, so if. You make changes on a Tuesday night, you go home that night, because I usually do it live, you'll be able to see it. Um, I will be still then sending out an updated PDF probably in the morning, or somebody wandered that night, because I update the Excel. At the same time, um, one of the cons is the town's not gonna spend twenty grand on something that wasn't. Well utilized, um, and I think one of the other pros is. That having the printout of the detail, sometimes that's easier to go back through, instead of trying to fumble on the computer. To find the detail piece of it, um one of the things that did mention to Dan. Is if we do after this budget season decide to. Um, go with another provider for it, um one of my suggestions was to get, ask the board of finance for one or two members to come and sit in the presentations. Because, like, it's for us to make a budget for you, but it's your budget, so I would want the board to be. Involved in at least however much they want to be involved in and picking one.
See if it's user friendly for us kind of lame people, right?
Yeah. Uh.
Mary, that wasn't funny.
He wasn't speaking for himself. Um, so, but we're not there yet, we're gonna take a year off from it.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna, with the changeover in first left, and I didn't want to like, try to rush a decision. Um, and throw good money after bad, just trying to have one, so.
Someone like to make a motion? How about Brandon's uh? We have a second, all in favor on Brandon's report?
Aye, aye.
Hey, I, do you want to make another? Second in a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bill, thank you.